So, call Lauren if you want to.
Okay.
All right.
Mike, what are you thinking of having the audit right at the beginning, I assume?
Yeah, I was, I was going to do my superintendent's report with the presentation regarding the return to school and then immediately, obviously, we can have board discussion and then the auditors are all set immediately following that, but before we begin the agenda.
Would you want to do that first because the board discussion could get extended?
Well, we certainly could do that. My thought was I wouldn't want to have everyone endure our auditor's presentation who's here to...
They are, they are pretty boring. There's no question about it.
And our auditor is listening to us now, by the way, Mr. Kelly, but that's okay.
I know, I know.
And he's, he's in the comfort of his home, so either way is totally fine. He would be happy to accommodate us either way.
Entirely up to you.
Well, I had planned to have it immediately following our...
Let's do it that way.
...opening and then, and I did alert him to that, so he's, he's prepared.
Okay. Just as long as he doesn't fall asleep during our deliberation.
No.
I'm already asleep, Mark.
Oh.
Thank you. I'll be here.
Yes, he's in such an exciting line of work.
Wow.
Taxes are exciting. We've got tax season.
It's too bad we don't have a lawyer here. We could bash the lawyers and the accountants at the same time. It would be like a perfect evening.
I'd rather have discussions with accountants.
I would agree with that. Okay, is everyone here? In that case, I'd like to call the March 3th Abboton Heights School Board Work Session to order. Could we all, could we do roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Acker?
Here.
Mr. Azar?
Here.
Dr. Cadman?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Bedensky?
Here.
Mrs. Pushterri? Don't see her. Nope, absent. Mr. Robson?
Here.
Mrs. Tierney?
Here.
And Mrs. Brashowski is absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Could we please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Dr. Mann, could we please have the superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acker. Tonight, I'd like to continue in our monthly, bi-monthly updates with respect to return to school. I, it's well known that Abboton Heights will have our full return to in-person instruction on Monday, March 8th. Students will also have an all-virtual option and surveys were sent to families asking them to select which model they preferred. We had a tremendous response, as we always do. Our, our families are enormously cooperative when we reach out to them and I thought we could just share the results from the survey. The question is which mode of instruction did the family prefer, either full day, in-person, five days per week, or all virtual? From the high school, we had, and the high school number is actually a little bit lower. This, in this, we had a few duplicate responses, but we have about two-thirds of our high school students who wish to return to school full five times, five days per week. At the middle school, that number increases to about 75%. Three-fourths of our students will be back five days per week on March 8th. And then for each elementary school, at Clark Summit Elementary, about 85% of the students will be back. Ransom Elementary, 86. A little less at South Abboton Elementary at 82 and a little more at Waverly Elementary at 90%. And with this return, we have developed certain guidelines. Families will have the option, while the, the choice is going to be binding, families will have the option to change their selection in mid-April, circumstances permitting. Students may not switch from virtual to in-person even for short periods of time and vice versa as well. And, and only those students who are quarantined may utilize virtual instruction. And, and we came up with these, these, these thoughts in an effort to make it work for our teachers. Our teachers have been doing incredible work and there really has to be some control over who is where. And these are some of the, you know, broad stroke guidelines that, that we put out. For anyone who wants to, you know, go into greater detail, we have posted on our website and also we have linked on this slide, frequently asked questions that again goes into greater detail for each of those guidelines that we listed before. And I would say this, this presentation, I should note, is posted on our website and all, all of these links can be accessed just by accessing this, this presentation. So, return to school. Couple important questions came up since our last meeting. And as we said, there will be a minimum of three feet physical distance between students upon return. In many cases, there'll be, there will be more than three feet, but three feet is, is the minimum acceptable distance that, that we will have upon return. And, but when students are having lunch and eating without their masks, we will achieve six feet of physical distance at that time. And I, I wanted to talk about the guidance that is out from CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. There's been a lot of discussion among many people and, and I, I wanted to kind of address what it is I was thinking as I was offering this, this recommendation to the board. And so, we want to begin by saying that the CDC and the PA Department of Education have adopted the recommendation of six feet of physical distancing. And as I've noted, we can only rely on three feet of distance, a minimum of three feet of physical distance between our students upon their return on Monday. And, and to put the, the guidance from the CDC and the Department of Education in context, if Abboton Heights fully adopted these recommendations, our high school and our middle school would have not opened this entire year. They would have been closed since last March and only recently would our elementary schools have been allowed to open in the hybrid model. And, and, you know, I think that's important to know because very, very few people here would say that that would have been an appropriate response, yet it would have been the response if we had to follow closely the Department of Ed and the CDC guidance. And the fact is that that would be true not only for Abboton Heights School District, but it would have been true for the vast majority of public schools across Pennsylvania and the United States. They never, ever would have opened under any circumstances, including hybrid, if we held true to these recommendations. And I, I had a number of slides, but I replaced them with a quote from an email I received this morning from the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. And pulling a quote out of that email, they were very clear to say that the Wolf Administration continues to maintain that as local leaders, and while this was sent to the superintendent, it certainly applies to school boards, you are best positioned to make instructional decisions that account for the county level transmission metrics and additional local factors, including local resources and community needs. And so, while the Department of Ed offers guidance with respect to six feet and three feet and a number of other factors, they, they really are, I think sincere in saying that this is a local decision, that local leaders, school boards, superintendents, administration, unions, everyone can, can weigh in on and try to come to the best decision for the local community. And so, I, I wanted to just provide some resources, some articles. And as I said in the past, it's not hard to grab an article that supports whatever point of view you hold in, in these, in these very difficult decisions regarding return to school. And, and my point here is absolutely not to say that we're refuting the Department of Ed guidelines or we're refuting the CDC guidelines, but rather, we're saying that it is fair to have a discussion and that while reasonable people may disagree with our approach, our approach is not unreasonable in our effort to return. And so, again, all of this is posted online. For anyone who wants to, to read more, I would encourage them to call up the presentation and click on these links, which all go to, you know, the original articles or the source documents. And so, Massachusetts, one of the state leaders, one of the national leaders in education, has a three-foot standard for their return to school. Indiana, many other states also do. And there is very strong support from the medical, medical community and there's a listing of physicians and medical professionals that offer their thoughts with respect to the three-feet standard in New York. Also, there's a link to the World Health Organization, which also is supportive of the three-foot standard. The CDC guidance and, and, you know, offered in good faith and, and very thoughtfully, is often criticized as being out of balance with the mental health impact of school closures. And there's a link to an article, again, one that I picked, that, you know, tries to balance the thought of, you know, being safe in school with respect to COVID and also the impact of mental health on students. And I, I also added an article here where there's very, very strong indications that even in instances where there is a high level of community spread, that transmission in schools is not worse than and on occasion less than what is happening in the surrounding community. Approximately 20% of Pennsylvania school districts are operating under a full return model, which we propose to take on on Monday. And in speaking to leaders in schools in our region that have undertaken this full return, they are, they are experiencing success and they have absolutely no plan to return to hybrid. And, and I think of all the, the, information that's being presented, all the links that are here, this is a very important one. All right. Often cited is a CDC study that took place in Georgia where transmission did occur in the schools and in the district. And the, the conclusion of the, the study was that when transmission does occur in schools, it's rare, but it certainly can happen. And when there's an outbreak, it is nearly always adult to adult and adult to child. And, and it's very serious. It certainly was very serious in this study that took place in Georgia. But it's, it's, it's encouraging to us and Abboton Heights is distinct in many ways from other districts in that nearly every one of our staff members has received two doses of Moderna vaccine in preparation for our full return. So, the, the, the threat of adult to adult and adult to child transmission of COVID is substantially, substantially diminished in Abboton Heights because of the fact that our adults are, are vaccinated. And so, while we are not going to achieve six feet all times in all places, we will absolutely strictly enforce Pennsylvania's universal mask, mask order, which can be accessed here. And we will also very closely adhere to the Pennsylvania Department of Education mandates regarding building closure in the event of positive cases. So, I, I do want to make the point that because we are back full does not mean that we are any less cautious. In fact, we're going to be even more cautious. And to the extent that we have positive cases in our building, we will respond quickly and forcefully as we have done from the beginning of this pandemic. And we will not hesitate to close schools based upon the department's mandates that again can be found at the end of this link. And, and finally, Abboton Heights will be quick to respond to changing conditions and is prepared to take whatever actions are necessary, including district closures to manage emerging, emerging challenges. And, you know, this, I, I put this statement here because, you know, it, it commonly discussed are the, the COVID variants. COVID is changing. In some cases, it's becoming more easily transmitted. And so, again, I, I just want to emphasize, because we are back does not mean we are less vigilant. We will be more vigilant. We will monitor changing events and we will respond quickly whenever, whenever it is necessary. And, and so now I, I want to move on to the preparation that we've been undertaking in large part since, since our last meeting. And I want to begin by offering our thanks to our teachers, our support staff and our administration, who have been working so very hard in recent days to get the school ready for a full return for our students. We've had very large amounts of furniture have been placed in storage to maximize available space. We've purchased additional chairs and tables to help achieve physical distancing in our cafeteria. Ventilation is something. It's an important topic for us to be able to discuss. And when I sat with our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Eric Elliott, and his supervisor, Mr. Mirabelli, the, the first thing he said, and this was a very sincere thought, he said, "It's, it was such a good thing that over the years, we have replaced so many motors, we have replaced so many belts, that our, our HVAC system has been properly maintained over many, many years." And I will also say that the board is aware of this because the board has always employed HVAC, our own HVAC maintenance staff for many years and, and currently and over a long period of time, our focus has been on air exchange. So ventilation is not a new topic for us. We've engaged with our association to speak to them about the good things that are happening with respect to this topic, but it is one that is very, very, has always been actually important to us, not just because of, you know, a, a pandemic that has come along. And, and finally, I do want to acknowledge that the board has been fully supportive in all of our efforts to prepare for the full return of students. You know, the instruction I get is just simply get it done irrespective of, it never has a single board member asked, you know, what does it cost or what are we spending? It's, what are we doing to try to improve the safety of our buildings? I think that's, you know, an important point to make. And so I, I thought I would just offer a before and after photo. You'll see the photo on the left is that of our middle school auxiliary gym. And I took this just prior to our meeting last month. And then you could see the auxiliary gym as of yesterday at Abboton Heights Middle School and, and obviously the very hard work that went into that. And this is again, one snapshot of what has been occurring across the district. We've actually brought in storage. This is two storage containers at Waverly Elementary. Here are three large storage containers that we've moved into the middle school. And we have, recognizing we have all of our students coming back, we've taken unnecessary furniture, or furniture that we would like to use when, you know, when spacing isn't an issue, we've put them into storage to allow for the maximum amount of space in our building. And again, our maintenance administration and professional staff have done a tremendous work in getting our buildings ready. Also, with respect to preparation, transportation was a large concern that I spoke about at our last meeting. But since our last meeting, we've had a welcomed increase in available bus drivers. So things have, have shown some substantial improvement since our last discussion. We are however concerned about traffic on the first day, Monday and through the first week, especially during morning drop-off at our elementary school. And we are encouraging parents and students to check their parent portal to verify pickup and drop-off times with our buses. With our new drivers and expanded routes, we actually may be coming a little earlier in the morning. In some instances, it could be a little later. So we want parents to check the parent portal. Again, this presentation can be accessed just by going to our website. And to access the parent portal, the parents could just simply click this link if they're not familiar with it. And anyone who's having any trouble whatsoever getting the information or navigating our portal, they can just simply send an email to this address and someone will be in touch to, to help them out. So, on the topic of elementary drop-off, as always, elementary schools will open to accept students at 8:20 a.m. In the past, the school day started promptly at 8:30 a.m. Now, because we anticipate many more parents driving their students to school, we are going to implement what we're going to call a temporary rolling start to the day. And that is to say, students are still welcome at 8:20, but rather than a hard start at 8:30, we're going to allow the flexibility to 8:50 for people to come into the building. And, and my sense is, on the first morning, we're going to have problems because everyone is going to be there at 8:20 or before. And, and we're hoping that as people get familiar, they, they can say, "All right, I'm going to come a little later and a little later." And ultimately, those traffic lines will, will start to diminish. But just as, you know, an extra note of caution, we're going to be flexible with the rolling start. Again, 8:20 is solid, but we're going to roll to 8:50 before we start considering students late, at least temporarily. And, and now I, I'm very excited to, this is the first, we've had a chance to talk about this in public. I'm very excited to, to talk about a community partnership that Rite Aid is rolling out with respect to COVID testing. In all the CDC guidance, COVID testing has been identified as a very valuable tool to support schools. Testing is now available to, and while it's always have been available, but testing is now available in this new partnership that is being rolled out by Rite Aid. All tests are free. There's no need to even show an insurance card. Testing takes place in the drive-through at Rite Aid and results are emailed directly. So, you know, as we get back to school or even now, anyone in our community that has an interest in this simply has to go to this link, Rite Aid COVID testing, fill out a form and, and they will be able to go to the drive-through at Rite Aid, have a test and then the email, the results will be emailed to them. And we also have put a prominent spot on our homepage where members of our community can simply click on the block and they'll be taken right to the registration form that will allow them to participate in this, I think, very insightful and very thoughtful program being offered by Rite Aid. And again, it's, it's entirely free, not even an insurance card is required. And, and we have a, a real-life sample experience, as a matter of fact, from today. We had, we became aware that someone wanted to try this out and, and the result is it took four minutes to register online. The, the person was able to schedule appointment 30 minutes after completing the form and it took six minutes to take the test in the drive-through. So, again, we view this as a very positive tool that will assist us in the event that we have positive cases or close contacts, you know, to, to better support the operation of our school and the needs of, of our families and, and our community. And, and we think that Rite Aid is doing a very good job in, in rolling this out.
Mike, Gene Cadman, can you speak to how long it takes? Well, what type of test? Is it a rapid test or PCR test? And how long does it take for the results to be good? And then how are the results related to the person?
Yes, the, the registration form requires a, an email to be entered and it is through that email that the results are communicated back. I don't think these are the rapid, get an immediate result test, but I'll have to get back to you on the, on the specific times that are involved. Okay? And then, you know, in, in conclusion, I, I do want to say that the Abboton Heights community, and I have seen this firsthand so many times, day after day, has demonstrated an extraordinary determination and kindness through this pandemic. All right. No doubt, the issues we face are challenging and, and we recognize there are many different perspectives on how our school, our community should approach and address these challenges. And I do want to say on behalf of myself, and I'm sure on behalf of the board, thank you to all for your advocacy, for your kindness and for your grace as we attempt to navigate these challenges that we face together as a community. And so, Mr. Acker, that, that concludes my, my formal presentation. We do have a presentation from our auditor to follow, but I'm going to stop sharing now and see if there's any discussion.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mann. Any, any questions or comments from the board members? Mrs. Tierney? Michelle? Okay.
Okay. Yep, yep. I just want to commend Dr. Mann and just kind of reiterate this last comment. Our Abboton Heights community has done an incredible job to be respectful, keep their cool, get through this and work as hard as they can to be successful for our students, our parents themselves. And I commend Dr. Mann and your administration for being the leaders and guiding all of us to help us make these decisions. Because no one understands at all if... Because no one understands at all if this is, you know, the, the, the best way to go. It is the way that we're choosing to go and it's a, a challenge for all of us. And I commend the district and all of us for sticking with this and working as hard as we can to make this successful. So good luck on Monday to you and your team. And good luck to all of the parents and students. It's like going to be the first day of school for the year and, and I'm looking forward to, to seeing the success. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Tierney. Mrs. Cadman, Dr. Cadman?
I would only ask that more information be obtained as far as the specifics of the Rite Aid testing. I think age, you know, the ages of people who can be tested is also something that needs to be explored. My understanding is that at some point it was eighteen and over, it might have gone to an age below that, but I don't want anybody to be, you know, under misconception that they can take their eight-year-old, you know what I mean, to Rite Aid for a rapid test. I'm just, I'm not sure.
No, I, I will have, I, I will check, I believe it's four, four years old and above. That this is allowed. But on our website, we will have a whole host of information. We just got the link up today, but we'll have all kinds of information available to people who click our, our link on our website. I don't think that's there now, but our, our intention is to expand it. So we have a full range of information available for everyone, including the very good questions you ask about how long and all that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the board? Dr. Mann, I do have a question. You talked about when there is a positive COVID exposure in a school that we're going to rapidly address it. And I just wonder if you could put a little bit, little bit more detail into exactly the process that's going to go through. You know, what's the chain of command? Who makes the decision? And what's your hope, hope for turnaround time to deal with the situation?
Yes, well, the, the answer is immediately. And so what I will tell you is a great amount of work is underway now to assist us win. And we know it's a win. We know it's when we have a positive case in our buildings. For example, we have been working for weeks now on developing seating charts for every seat on every bus. So that in the event, for example, a student is asymptomatic but positive on a bus, we will know everyone who sits around that person. Same thing is true in our classes where we're setting up seating charts. And so as soon as we receive a report through, for example, our COVID tracker or parents have been extraordinarily cooperative and sending us emails to let us know about things that are happening in home. Our, our Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Megan Buck, has been coordinating the response. So we would, for example, identify close contacts in the class, which would be six feet for fifteen minutes. We recognize that there will be more, prior to our full return, very often we would have no close contacts in a classroom because we were always six feet. That is likely not to be the case now, so we're going to have more close contacts in classrooms. And again, that will be based upon consultation with the teacher and the students who are in the class. And we immediately then reach out to families to notify them of the quarantine responsibilities. And we, we follow through and follow through and follow through. So we have a successful process that has been in place. We track every event, both internally and externally. And so we're, we're prepared. I believe we're prepared. And ultimately, Mr. Acker, if, if we are not satisfied that our contact tracing is appropriate or completed, we will not hesitate to close a building as we have done in the past because we don't want potentially asymptomatic students in, in the buildings.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other comments before we go to Mrs. Tierney?
Sorry, again, I forgot to ask this earlier. Dr. May, are we using our vans for transportation or just for all the larger buses? So we are using vans and?
We are, we are using vans for some of our more remote, remote routes where buses don't go. And also for many of our special education students would be riding on, on vans.
But they're, they're social distance and they are, you know, at least six feet apart and, you know, how many, how many students, how many students are on the vans at one time?
Right, they are, we have no more than two per seat when it comes to, and that's been in, in our plan for some time. Masked, all that. But, you know, that really is a standard. And as has been the case through the year, our, one of our weaknesses, even in hybrid, has been the school buses and in transportation. Now, we actually think that's going to get a little better as we now have, I think, four or five more drivers than we did, you know, a few short weeks ago. But clearly, when people are on our buses, they will be inside five feet of space. Or excuse me, inside six feet of space. But we're, we're saying that, we're saying two per seat is, is what we can, is what we're, the, the minimum that we're going to allow.
Okay, thank you.
I, I misspoke, by the way. Our next, our next event is the audit report, I believe. And then we're going to do public comments. So if there are no other comments from the board at this time, why don't we go to the auditor's report?
Okay, Mr. Mirabelli, can we have you make introductions, please?
Certainly, with us tonight, I see he's already unmuted and ready to go, is Brian Kelly, who is the Principal of Brian T. Kelly and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Mirabelli. I am presenting the final draft financial statements of the Abington Heights School District as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Just like every year, we give two opinions on the district's financial statements. Both opinions are unmodified, which means they're the highest opinion we can give an audit team. From our test procedures, we found no material errors in the financial states and financial statements themselves. If anybody has any questions as I go, please let me know. Some of the operating highlights, page eighteen. The common question we get is what is the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year? The bottom of page eighteen, the total fund balance is ten million, four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And the majority of that balance has been designated for future expenditures of the district. Whether it be retirement costs, healthcare costs, capital improvements, that has been designated for future expenditures. Page eighteen, or I'm sorry, page twenty is the actual results. The first column is the general fund. Expenses exceeded revenues at the bottom of the page for the net change of approximately six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And again, the beginning fund balance was ten million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand. And the ending fund balance would be ten million, four hundred and forty-one thousand. Page twenty-two is the budget to actual. Back in May of two thousand nineteen, the district passed their budget for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The district anticipated a deficit or net change in fund balance at the end, at the bottom of page twenty-two, of approximately five hundred and ninety-four thousand. The actual results again were a deficit of six thousand, three seventy-one or a favorable positive variance of approximately five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And all those variances Jim explains very well in pages six through eighteen in the management discussion and, and analysis. Any questions so far? Page thirty-nine, the notes that the financial statements make of the majority of the remaining financial. Page thirty-nine is the bonds payable, which we always go over annually. The total bonds payable at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty are approximately three point two million dollars. And on page forty is the payment schedule for the bonds, which, which will be paid in full in two thousand twenty-five. The bonds range in interest rates anywhere from two to two point two five percent. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Kelly? I know it's only a half a year into the pandemic, but how are the CARES funds reflected in this year's report or are they not at all?
They are most likely not reported at all in this report. They were reported in the sixth thirty, twenty twenty-one financial statement. That was all dispersed and will be accounted for in this fiscal year coming up, the year end, six thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cadman, you had your hand up?
I have the same question as you, Mr. Acker.
Oh, well. Mr. Robson?
Thank you, Mr. Acker. The, on page sixteen, the net pension liability, is that, how, is that? I don't want to say the word normal, but is that a high number, a low number? Is that expected?
Based on the size of the school district, that's an actuarial report that comes from PISers. That is relatively, for the size of your district, seventy-four million dollars, that's really what is to be expected. And that balance doesn't need to be funded, you don't have to fund that amount. It's just an actuarial value. Probably, I would say, eight years ago, every district had to implement GASB thirty-four and all the pension standards that relate to it. So every district has a large pension liability on their balance sheet. And that particular page is full of cool liabilities and assets, which means that's all the district's assets and liabilities. And that page really has, that doesn't come into play when you do your budget annually. Your budget to pay your retirement expenses year by year. But that's an expected balance for the size of your district.
Thank you. Mr. Acker, just one more thing. You know, I know this, this is a lot of work and, you know, having the unmodified designation ever since I've been on the board is, I think, is a reflection of how hard everyone works to make sure what we're reporting is actually what we're doing. So, you know, I know Jim Mirabelli does a lot of work and so does Superintendent Mahan and, and everybody else because it's a, a reflection of good policies and procedures and people executing on them. So just thank you very much. This is a big deal.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. I, I completely agree with you. Mr. Kelly, how would you say our school district stacks up against our peer group from a fiscal responsibility and, and fiscal?
Mr. Acker, of the nine districts that we audited, your district is the most fiscally responsible, which you're in excellent fiscal condition. But, you know, that could change from, from year to year. So you always have to be cognizant of that. And the budget to actual, comparing that, Jim and his staff, you know, do an excellent job of staying on top of everything, to be quite honest with you. It's always a pleasure doing the audit. And again, you guys are very fiscally responsible.
Mr. Kelly, this is Greg Mandansky. I'm sorry, Warren, were you going to say something else?
Go ahead, Greg.
Just a quick question. I mean, yes, and, and I'm not looking for any kind of, you know, you, you see a lot of different school districts that we don't. This, and, and again, it's, it's, I know it'll be only your opinion, but is there something? Is there anything evident in our data that says we should be concerned about? That we should be looking at, that we should be like, hmm, pay attention to this because it may be out of the norm, it may not be in that range? I guess I'm always looking for improvements. And I'm just looking at, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think the biggest thing is your general fund balance is ten million dollars. A lot of districts think, oh, we don't need to continue to be fiscally responsible. And that's a big error a lot of them make where the fund balance goes negative and then that's a big issue. You know, you have a ten million dollar fund balance, but really that ten million dollar fund balance is made up of future expenditures that are known. It's six thirty, twenty. So a lot of districts don't take that approach. And then they get in trouble where the fund balance goes negative. And then with Act One and certain things, they can't raise real estate taxes and it, it gets to be a mess. But the big, the best thing you can do is always look at that fund balance and say, it's just not ten million dollars we do what we want with. That's really earmarked for future expenditures, which you do annually.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acker.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Mann, do we need to make a motion to approve the audit report or are we, what's the procedure here on this?
Yes, no, Mr. Acker, tonight is just a presentation. As the board, as the board will be reviewing the document, if any questions come up, they can certainly present them to administration before them to the auditor. And if everyone is, if, if the report is acceptable, we would put, intend to put it on the agenda for the regular March meeting for formal approval at that time.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, Mr. Kelly, thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure.
I, I think at this point in time, then, Dr. Mann, is that the end?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
It, it is, Mr. Acker. I, I do, I should have noted though, my hope is that the upstairs boardroom will be completed with its technological upgrade so that for our next meeting, we are likely to be able to have it in person. That's the hope. And so, you know, with any luck, I'll keep the board appraised. But at our next meeting, we could very well be upstairs in person. And, and with that, if it's all right with you, I could share my screen for the agenda.
I think we have to do public.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Comment. And before we open it up, I just want to reiterate, we ask everyone to tell us who they are and where they live and to try and keep their comments to approximately three minutes. Having said that, I see two people so far that have their hands up. The first would be Corinne. If you can, I've got her brought in. Corinne, it looks like you may be muted. Corinne, can you unmute if possible, please? Corinne? Let's move on to Philip Horahan and come back to Corinne.
Thank you. My, my name's Philip Perrin, I'm in Clark, Somus. I have two young daughters in South Abington Elementary. Dr. May, and thank you for replying to my email earlier on. That was very good of you. And, and thank you for the presentation today. Quick kind of two-part question, I think probably for you, Dr. May. And COVID screeners, are they going to continue in the new world or do they go away? And separately, have, during the hybrids phase, were they well respected and well-cherted? Do we, do we know? So two, two questions there.
Yes, thank, thank you, sir. And thank you for your email earlier today and the reminder to keep them posted on the web. That was a good, a good thought. With respect to the COVID screener, we are still going to continue with the COVID screener, but the COVID screener is going to be easier because just this week or very recently, the demand to quarantine when traveling has been lifted. And so that was a, a very significant component of our tracker. Also, for adults who have received the second dose of the vaccine, there is no longer a need to, with some other caveats, but there is largely no longer a need to quarantine if the person is in close contact. So that will simplify a, a great deal our tracking. But we still intend to track and, and my belief is that has, has been very well received. I, I don't know that is the case universally, but we will be tracking symptoms because we very much want families to still monitor students as they come to school, to keep students home if they're feeling sick. So in that respect, we will, we will continue to do our screening.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any hands, other hands raised. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the board? I, I would remind you that we have another opportunity for the public to make a comment during the work sessions at the end of our super, at the end of the working session before we adjourn the meeting, so.
Warren, I saw Megan O'Rourke, but that went away and now a Tony Buggno?
Okay, yes, I see Tony Buggno, okay.
Hello, everybody. I have two children at Waverly Elementary. Just curious, if there was a situation where you had to quarantine, say they came in contact with somebody, how would they continue to get educated if they had to quarantine from home and the teachers are no longer doing virtual?
Yes, our, our, first, you know, for- Yes, our, first, you know, for, for many years, we've always had, you know, a method for students who are out of school to keep up with their homework, keep up with their studies, that kind of thing. So, but for students who actually are in quarantine, we will have, while they will not be necessarily connected to their own teacher, we have virtual opportunities available for students who find themselves in, in those circumstances. So we will be making every possible effort to make sure that students who find themselves in quarantine stay connected to their, to their classes. And, and the, the length of quarantine now will be 10 days. And so hopefully, that will be, you know, of assistance as, you know, we deal with, hopefully, a rare circumstance where students find themselves in that need.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? Okay, why don't we move on, Dr. Mann, to the action discussion items, please? Dr. Mann, I think you're muted.
My, I'm having a little trouble escaping the screen, let me see if I can do it here. Okay, I'm sorry, just give me one, one moment to get this working. Okay, there we are. Can we see the agenda now?
Yes.
Okay, good, very good, thank you. So on, on the action discussion items, then, we request the board to approve, under number one, the resignation of Loretta Abadamo as teacher aide.
Second.
On the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Seven yes. And under appointments, number two, request the board to appro, to appoint Thomas Evans as our new Assistant Director of Special Education at a salary of $74,000 prorated for the 2021 school year, under the terms and conditions of the Act 93 agreement. That will be effective upon release from Mr. Evans' current position.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion? Roll call.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I skipped Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
And did I call Mr. Acker?
Yes, I'll do it again. I hope you get two votes for that, though.
That's fine.
Seven yes, we'll stop counting at the number of members here.
Okay.
And under appointments non-certificated, we ask the board to approve Lori Duboski as a teacher aide after her 60-day probationary period.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman? I'm sorry, Dr. Cadman?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Seven yes. And under number four, we ask the board to appoint Frank Pacetti, Stephanie Patrasko, and James Spangler to the respective positions.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
And Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Seven yes. And the following B, C, and D, all our amendments to our health and safety plan, which is posted on, on our website, these are more editorial than anything else. But under B, we would ask the board to consider a motion to amend the Abboten Heights School District Health and Safety Plan to reflect the following, effective March 8, 2021, and that is, quote, "A total reopen for all students and staff, but some students' families opt for distance learning out of safety, health concern."
So moved.
Second.
On the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
No.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Six yes, one no. And we ask the board to consider a motion to amend the Abboten Heights School District Health and Safety Plan replacing Mark Wyant with Margaret Vitale as a member of the pandemic team, as contained on page five of the plan.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion? Dr. Mann, do you have some idea on the timing that Dr. Vitale will be joining us and taking over these duties? And do we face a situation in which we have neither Dr. Wyant nor Dr. Vitale? And what would be your plans in that case?
Right, well, we have been without Dr. Wyant and Dr. Vitale for some time. I'm very pleased to say that Dr. Vitale is coming before the end of the month, I think maybe the 26th comes to mind. But in this case, both Dr. Wyant and Dr. Vitale would serve as members of the team, but neither one would be designated as the coordinator, so those duties are fulfilled. So I think we are, we're okay in the interim.
Any other questions or concerns? Roll call.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Seven yes. And finally, we ask the board to consider a motion to amend the Abboten Heights School District Health and Safety Plan, replacing, quote, "extracurricular and intergroup meetings and activities are prohibited" with "extracurricular and intergroup meetings must receive administrative preapproval, follow masking guidelines, and maintain physical distancing to the extent feasible." And this is on page 18 of the plan.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion?
I've got a question, Dr. Mann, when do the spring sports start?
I'm guessing a little later, yeah, this month, I'm not sure of the exact date. I know winter sports now are winding down with playoffs. So certainly by mid-March, I think the spring sports will be up and running. And I'll also say that, very happy that many other extracurricular activities, such as a play, is underway, which really was the driving force to have me recognize that we had to update this, this language.
Okay, yeah, that's great that we're having a play as well. Thank you.
Honestly, the mine is another one that's, you know, underway. So we're very happy that we have lots of students who are engaged.
And do we still have other seasonal sports participating? Like, are some of our fall sports, are they still doing some type of conditioning, practicing, or whatnot?
Yeah, I, I know football is, others may be doing it as well. I don't really have any specifics, but I think there's lots of activity. And happily, there could be lots more activity once the, the field of the track are cleared of snow, which is again, a very positive development that the board supported for our extracurricular programs.
And one other thing about that, I was notified that there will not be any competitions allowed on our track until our lines are painted. So I know that we have a date possibly to get those painted before, you know, when the weather breaks?
Yes.
Yep, that's on the docket, okay.
Yes, yes.
And another question I've had, I've had, I've received some phone calls from the Field Hockey Booster Group. They are inquiring about a coach. And this is the time of year that they are looking to do some type of conditioning camps for the summertime with the coach. And I was just wondering if you have any information on a, on a coach for field hockey? And if we could work on that?
Yeah, well, I will have to find out the information. I know that the general contractor has been in close touch with us with all the snow, and he's very anxious to get started on the lines. And with respect to field hockey, I will have to get back to you, I'm not familiar with where we stand on that issue.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Roll call.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
No.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Medensky?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
And Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Okay. Thank you very much, going back to public comment again. I see we have Katie Jackson with her hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just had one quick question, following up what was just discussed in Section D. It didn't reference the spring promise necessarily, but I was wondering, since the extracurricular activities and intergroup meetings have now changed to follow masking guidelines and things like that, will that now eliminate number four from the spring promise? Since, you know, kids can follow social distancing and masking guidelines, but still be able to, you know, practice with a hitting coach, for example, for softball or things like that, as long as they're following social distancing and guidelines when it comes to those things?
Yes, I'm very grateful to Mr. Snyder for his work on the spring promise. We still will have a spring promise, which asks our athletes to act responsibly with respect to masking and social distancing to the extent possible. We've modified it from the winter promise to allow involvement in other non-Abboten Heights activities, with the caveat that we ask that mask-wearing and responsible behavior also take place as our students are engaging in those external activities. So that is the modification, and I believe that people will in fact be able to participate in non-Abboten Heights-related activities this spring.
That's great. Any other public comments? Concerns of the board? Okay, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Very good.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Very speedy, Mr. Acker.
Thank you.
Good, good luck with Monday.
Yes, good luck Monday.
Thank you, yeah, our teachers are doing great.
Hope we don't have a snow, hope we don't have a snowstorm.
That'd be good, it's snow day.
Yes, snow days are back, should we need one.
Mr. Azar, you must be thrilled with that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Take care, guys.
Good night.
Good everyone, thank you so much.
Great job on the, on the audit, that's really good, that's really.